Welcome, everyone. We'll call this meeting of Weber County Commissioners to order dated the 17th day of October at 10 o'clock. In attendance today are Commissioner Gibson, Commissioner Harvey, and myself, Commissioner Ebert. We want to say welcome to you that are here in attendance and welcome to anyone who's watching on our live stream. We'll start this meeting today with the invocation by Pastor Dave Malinick. Our Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Devron Anderson and I will have the thought of the day. Pastor Malinick.
Lord God, we come before you and we want to thank you first for your grace and goodness to us. We thank you for our country and the liberties that you've given us, the vision of our founders, and for these servants of our community who help to uphold the Constitution and defend our freedoms while at the same time enabling us to prosper and pursue the callings that you've given us. I lift them up to you right now and ask that you would bless them and help them, give them guidance, and most of all, Lord, that they would serve in the fear of the Lord. I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Devron?
Please, can you after me? I'd like to pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for our invocation and thank you, Devron, for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And again, thank you, Pastor, for attending today and getting us started and reminding us of the direction we need to have our thoughts at all times. My thought really revolves around this process that we've gone through over the last several years of really looking at the county and the county's responsibilities and roles, having an end in mind, so to speak, understanding that we're working in a different time. Sometimes we get kind of stuck in time periods and we do things the old-fashioned way. And so, we've really made an effort over the last several years to be more thoughtful, more forward-thinking in how economies run, how communities are run, looking at industries that are up and coming and understanding how to build communities. So, I just want to read a really quick excerpt from a study. It says, "The effort to create a 21st-century city," and I would say county, is not so much about technology as it is about jobs, dollars, and quality of life. In short, it is about organizing one's community to reinvent itself for the new knowledge-based economy and society, preparing its citizens to take ownership of their community and educating the next generation of leaders and workers to meet these global challenges and preserve American leadership positions in the entertainment, software, and information industries. At the heart of this effort is recognition of the vital role that art and culture play in enhancing economic development and ultimately defining a creative community, one that exploits the vital linkages between art, culture, and commerce, and in the process consciously invests in human and financial resources to prepare its citizens to meet the challenges of the rapidly evolving post-industrial, knowledge-based economy and society." You know, we've spent a tremendous amount of time within our community in building up our arts and our culture and understanding the direction our economies are going in software and in, you know, a knowledge-based community. And what we really found is where in the past workforce-chased jobs, workforce-chased industry, what we're finding is industry now is chasing staff and employees and workforce. And understanding what the needs of the workforce is and what type of workforce you're looking for helps you to better understand how to create and strengthen your community to attract this workforce. And I think that you will find over this next year, and hopefully you will have felt in the last year or so, a real commitment to strengthen our community, whether it's addressing areas of poverty and diversity, or whether it's looking into the areas of culture, arts, and recreation. We want to create a community that people are invested in, and we want to create a community that people want to invest in, understanding that we'll have tremendous growth. We want that growth to be a quality growth, and we want quality jobs and industries moving here. And we believe we create that by having a very strong volunteered community that enjoys and wants to live and work here, and that's by having a community that's strongly based in a creative culture. And so, there's a tremendous amount of research into this area that we have followed and that we have looked at, and we have amazing teams. We're working with Marty and Cassie and Jennifer in our Parks Recreation, and I want to call out Ross, and I'd like to also say thank you to Sarah Tolliver for the amazing work that's being done. Through Commissioner Harvey, we're doing a tremendous amount of marketing, communication, and outreach to let people know all the amazing things that we possess here in Labor County. And again, we have great partners in our municipal mayor. So, we are committed to continuing to grow our community in a positive, forward-thinking manner, and we believe that strengthening our creative community is one of the best things that we can do. So, those are my thoughts for today, and I hope that you will keep that in mind over the next coming year and hold us accountable to make sure that you're seeing those things happen because we're about outcomes. That's my thought for today. Anything, Commissioners?
Well said. Wonderful. So, we'll move into presentations. Our first presentation is on the Culture, Parks, and Recreation Department, Marty Smith. See how those dovetailed into each other?
Thanks, Commissioners. It's always a pleasure to come and talk about the amazing staff we have in our department. If I look at a little fatigue, it's because I just got out of a tour meeting with you guys, so...
Believe me, I'm fatigued too. It was a great meeting.
It was a great meeting.
Does the word PowerPoint mean anything to anybody?
Pictures tell a better story than I...I'm not a very good speaker, so just wait till our things come up here. Shelley said I had three minutes, so I'll blaze right through this. The Culture, Parks, and Rec Department consists of 345 employees. About 270 of those are 19 hours or less part-timers. We do a lot of work with our part-time people, try to control our costs and our labor costs, and the rest of those are made up with other part-time and about full-time, about 50 full-time staff. As I quickly move through this, I would just like to mention that the Culture, Parks, and Rec Department is made up of an amazing staff that make this possible, often doing their jobs on evenings and weekends and holidays. They're truly the most talented and hard-working people that I've ever worked with, and some of them are here today. I'll point them out here in a minute, so get ready. We're made up of four divisions. Our Parks and Recreation Department is managed by Todd Ferrario. Raise your hand, Todd. He's back there. Golden Spike Event Center, Duncan Olson, another division director. Duncan. Ogden Nichols Conference Center, Cassie Bybee, and our special events is Jan Wilson. And of course, our Assistant Department Director is Jennifer Graham, and we all know that she's the brains of the department, kind of keep us all from screwing up. In addition, we work closely with the Utah State University Extension Office. They're housed out at the fairgrounds. We have some staff that work out there with them. And then finally, our tourism, marketing, and destination management partner, Visit Ogden, and President and CEO of that, Sarah Tolliver, is here. Sarah, you gotta raise your hand. Yeah, there you go. Without Visit Ogden, truly, the lift that they do for us, it would be impossible, the marketing that they do for our destination at an international and national level. Thank you to them. I'll start with our recreation. Last year, our Recreation Department managed, and this number just blew me away, 1,935 league games across basketball, softball, soccer, lacrosse, and volleyball. And our ice sheet did 558 hockey games last year, not to mention all the other activities they do, skating and open skate, curling, clubs, et cetera. Our Parks Department is made up of four parks, Fort Bonaventura, Weber Memorial Campground, North Fork Park, and newly coming on just this summer online is Observatory Park, which is a great example of repurposing an area that used to be the city landfill, turning it into an amazing park with trails, cyclocross course, wetlands, et cetera. They do amazing work out there. Next is our Golden Spike Event Center. That's the fairgrounds, 150 acres, home to the Weber County Fair, world chariot and cutter races, horse racing, demolition derbies, roller derby, consumer shows like antique and gun shows, rodeos, barrel racing, and some of our self-promoted events like the Hof German Fest, We Bear Fest, Red, White, and Blue, Buckwild Rough Stock Challenge, and the Icebreaker Rodeo, which is now the largest high school rodeo in the state, high school rodeo. So, in addition, we offer full concession services out of our Golden Spike Event Center. Last year, the Golden Spike did 526 events. Our David Eccles Conference Center and Perry's Egyptian Theater offers full catering services, AV services, theater, production services. The OACC hosts trade shows, meetings, conferences, banquets, galas, concerts, live theater, ballet and dance, TEDx events, Ogden Musical Theater, and film, among other things. Last year, the Conference Center hosted 257 events with over 390 use days and with an economic impact of just around $11 million. And then our special events, of course, puts on our self-promoted events, including Miss Weber County, the Weber County Fair, and contributes to other self-promoted events like We Bear and Hof. Over 46,000 people attended our fair this year, over four days. The fair is a collection of many large events, including concerts, MMA, rodeo, horse pulls, demolition derby, and attractions, food vendors, and junior livestock, just to name a few. This year, we had a record number of dollars raised at the Junior Livestock Program. In addition to amazing staff that puts on the fair, Jan Wilson has, over the years, built a truly phenomenal dedicated volunteer staff that many of whom take vacation during that week to come out and work the fair, and we really appreciate them, just citizens in our community that are committed to the fairgrounds and love coming out and helping us do that. Lastly, I would like to mention the contribution our venues bring to the overall tourism in the county. We have teams, rodeo, race participants, dance workshops, tournaments, and convention delegates visiting us from many states, and even one of our conventions and trade shows at the Conference Center brings visitors from over 30 countries worldwide. So, this effort contributes to that, contributes to that all-important number that tourism in Utah reduces the overall tax burden, $1,300 per household. And so, I'd just like to thank our staff, many of which are sitting right back here. Some of those numbers are staggering that go on in this department over the course of a year, literally every single day and evening and nights we're putting on events. So, thank you to them because without them, it just really would not happen. They're amazing. And so, with that, I would just say, any questions?
I've got a couple of things to say with regards to this, Mr. Smith. Thank you for your presentation. Will you turn that presentation back on for just a minute now that you just turned it off? Fatima, and go to slide one or two. I'll tell you in just a moment. I wanted the slide up there to show, go back, you'll probably go back a little bit, keep going, to probably to the first. This is a great reminder right there. It's great. For the record, it's my observation, as I have the privilege of meeting other county leaders throughout the state, to be reinforced that there is not another county in the state of Utah that enjoys the same types of facilities and the diversification that we do. Not only are we hugely successful, and our biggest problem right now is finding time to fit more business in, our staff has done a wonderful job in partnering with the Visit Ogden or the CVB here in Ogden, which Sarah runs. And one of the things that you brushed over, Marty, was something I wanted to bring and really make accentuate that, is that why do we do such a thing? Why do we, as Weber County, have all these facilities? Is it government's place to participate in these type of facilities? One might say, is it government's place to participate in a city or a municipal park to have a swing set or a little track, or maybe some soccer fields or tennis courts? Ours are much bigger or on a much grander scale, but I, because of the management of this group and because of the successes from our Visit Ogden crew, each household, each tax ID number in Weber County receives a $1,300 benefit annually, or their taxes are $1,300 lower than they would have been without these services. So, anyone who listens now or in the future, based on here in October 2017, when you get your tax notice, know that if it weren't for these things and with our partnership with our Travel and Tourism Department, your tax bill would be $1,300 higher today than it is without these things. So, we have these things that bring in tourists, plus our local community gets to participate at them and enjoy them, and no other place around this great state gets it like we do. It's phenomenal. We live truly in one of the greatest places in our state and in the region, and I am proud to call you my friends, my workmates, my examples in some cases. You guys set the bar. You are truly heroes in setting the pace in this region, and you, for me, get absolutely a standing ovation.
Really, they set the tone, the managers, for the work that's done in this department, so...
Now, I'd like to, just one more thing, because there was, through the presentation, you asked everyone, you turned around and you asked everyone to raise their hand except for one. Cassie, why don't you come on?
Oh, did I not ask? Did I? Did I forget, Cassie?
No, it's too late now.
Did I say her name even, or?
Cass, please come on.
I'm sorry. I'm gonna sit down and you can...
No, it's fine. It's really good.
Cassie Bybee is the Division Director over the Ogden Nichols Conference Center.
You leave the slides up.
I'm sorry.
Just so we can reference them.
Because I have to see her every day.
Oh, did you see that? He has to see me every day.
Your name is called, you raise your hand. That's how we do it here. You've learned that now, but we're not done. I don't know by which... You know, I think back in nearly a quarter of a century of work at Weber County, and I look at the work, Duncan, how you've taken and gone leaps and strides with the team. Todd?
They should come up here.
He's like a big oxen. He just pulls the load down the road. Sorry. Works and works and works.
Unbelievable, and when it's timed it. It's absolutely amazing, but when it's... Waterline, or rebuild a Zamboni, or re-outfit a whole building... Because of something, or create a stencil or a design for a new park feature to save the county thousands and thousands of dollars, Todd's there. I'm incredibly impressed every time I turn around and you have yet another talent that's... It's amazing. And to you, Mrs. Bybee, I want to recognize the fact that there are two or three things that have come online this year because of your leadership. We had an incredibly, what I would call, successful TEDx event. We had a very, very successful Ogden Musical Theater and Kids Act Up, which not just involved the community, but lots of children. Recently, through our Economic Development Department with Kristen Hadid, he did another phenomenal thing with Doug Larson and Holland Little Banks and the Economic Development thing that was out of the park. And even personally, for a simple wedding day, you made that great and just took the extra time after each member of your staff worked hundreds of hours. I can't thank you and all of you enough for your service and your example. I appreciate you very much. And so, to you and your team, again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. And it's really the team. To the team.
Next time, Cass, when your name's called, raise your hand. That's fine.
Commissioner Gibson?
Well, just quickly, I'm gonna do this for them so that they feel off the spot because I think this is what they would say, and that is that sometimes when you recognize someone, you have a hard time, sometimes you forget about the rest of the team that's behind him that actually pushes him along and helps him. Some of you are here and some of you are not. And so, on behalf of those folks who were called out, I hope that that's what you'd have me say. I know it is, that you do have a tremendous group of people working for you, working with you towards this common goal, and it's just fun to watch. It really is. I mean, it's great throughout the county, but you guys certainly lead the way and do a great job, and we're just proud to work with you. I hope that they feel that gratitude and that you'll pass that on throughout the ranks. Okay? Thank you.
Awesome. Fatima, can you go to the second slide, please? Third slide? Okay, second slide. Really quickly, I'll just add, as Commissioner Harvey talked about the purpose, this is perfect, yeah. Those numbers, and then can you go to the next slide? And then the next slide? I'm looking for the slide that has $11 million economic, and that's like, go back to the $11 million economic impact. The second slide talks to you about the community impact, about building communities and having events for children, having events for youth, and you can see it's having an impact. The slide talks about the economic impact of these types of events, $11 million annually, and, Sarah, growing at a 6% a year, we're hoping, we're forecasting.
Twenty-six this year, I believe it was, wasn't it? In some segments?
That's just for the Conference Center. So, again, as we look at a purpose that we're purposeful in the areas as a county that we're building and strengthening, is to build and strengthen our community and to provide economic impact. That overarching goal and mission will continue as long as I think we're here to really create prosperity in our community. There are other areas that we continue to work in, but specific to who we're recognizing today, there's a purpose and intent. We're purposeful in all the things that we're doing, and there's reasons. And we want to thank the team that's been assembled, that continues to push us forward and have vision. Again, thank you very much. Let's move on to our consent items under F. Item number one, request for approval of warrants 1225 through 1227 and 421769 through 421985 in the amount of $1,617,158.32. Item two is a request for approval of purchase orders in the amount of $50,185.99. Item number three is a request for approval of minutes for the meeting held on October 3rd and 10th, 2017. Item number four is a request for approval of a new business license. Item number five is a request for Information Technology Department for approval to surplus old network equipment, and item six is a request for approval to ratify an amendment, number four, to the Emergency Watership Protection Cooperative Agreement 68-8D43-16-213. Those are the items on our consent calendar for today. Commissioners, do you have any questions specific to these consent items?
I don't.
Seeing no questions, Mr. Ricky Hatch, our clerk auditor, would you go over our warrant request and our PO request?
You bet. Pretty simple this week. We had eight purchase orders this week for $50,000. Eighty-three percent of that amount, or $42,000, was for IT, and that is to install fiber out at the fairgrounds. It'll be nice.
For those of you who don't know, that's a big deal. We still have the mice in the little cage running to run most of the IT out there, so...
Horses around the walk.
Yeah, horses. So, our IT Director, Quinn Powers, has really spearheaded that, so that's great to hear.
That'll be nice. As far as check register, we issued 220 checks this week for $1.6 million, really just two main items in that. Forty-three percent of that amount, or $690,000, was for the library, construction at the North Ogden Library, and shelving. Twenty-five percent of the amount, or $403,000, is for the transfer station, and that is for disposal fees.
Awesome. Commissioners, any questions about our PO or our warrants for today?
Nope.
Seeing none, I'm open for a motion.
So moved, we approve the consent items as I'd explained.
A second. I have a motion in a second. Do I have any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Any polls? It passes. Thank you very much. We'll move on to G, action items. Number one, a request from the Weber County, excuse me, a request from the Weber County Addressing Department for approval of the Ogden Canyon Road name changes.
Didn't know you were from the Addressing Department.
I didn't know we had an Addressing. Well, hello.
Hi, Commissioners.
Devron Anderson. Sorry, Devron, I was confused by the Addressing Department.
I asked Brett Badley, our address manager, if I could step in today to kind of go through a couple of things with you, but I did want him to come. He's an employee in my office. He's sitting right back there. Stand up, Brett.
That's always safer.
About...
Parade wave.
About a year ago, we were able to create a position in our office to have an Addressing Manager because we have very many Addressing needs in the county, and these needs aren't things that we can look past anymore because they are very critical to the safety and health and... critical to the safety and health and welfare of our citizens. So in the future, Brett will be presenting these, but I wanted to present to you today just so that I could give a small explanation of what we're doing here. State Code, Section 72-3-108 gives counties the ability to change the names of their streets. They can do it with or without petition from the citizens. And so, using that code as our authority, we are asking that you guys consider to change some street names. This particular case that we're looking at today, we've got many instances of this, but in the past, we have had people who have given themselves addresses, or named their street themselves, or given their street numbers, that don't necessarily work with our overall addressing system. Our ultimate goal here is to get emergency response vehicles to the front door of any house that needs it at any time, as quickly as possible. I had one gentleman approach me from... This has been a few years now, but there's a part in the Upper Valley where there's a private road that comes off the highway and goes across the river, and there's many houses and buildings that are on that private road. On the other side of the river, between the highway and this private road, there's a whole trailer court with hundreds of buildings and structures in that area with a circular road that goes through the trailer court. And then there's the highway. Because there's been no manager of addressing in the past, all of these buildings on the private road and in the trailer court are all addressed off the highway. The gentleman that approached me, he lives in a home on that private street, and he said that they had an emergency in his house where they called an ambulance, and the ambulance could not find their house. They could see the ambulance driving around in circles in the trailer court, looking for the house number of their house, which was on a different street behind the river. They ended up waiting over 45 minutes, when he was actually having the beginning stages of heart attack, for that ambulance to get to their house. So that kind of situation's unacceptable for me and for my address manager. So when the opportunity comes through development or otherwise, when we feel the need, we're gonna ask that some of these streets be named properly, sorry, be named properly, so that we can actually get these things properly mapped and get, have the ability to do emergency response in the proper way. So in the same type of scenario, the one that we brought to you today, there's multiple streets in Ogden Canyon that are all called Ogden Canyon, and they're layered, multiple layers, north, south, east, west. So we're gonna try to start naming them appropriately and defining them properly, so that we can get emergency response vehicles to where they need to be. And in this case today, we're looking at two streets in specific that are, we have proposed development happening on these streets, so we want to get them named properly.
Okay. Is one of them going to be called Minster Way?
No. We're more concerned with the actual numbers on the streets. The citizens are free to petition you guys to name them particular names if they want.
Okay. Questions, Commissioners?
I just think it's interesting, because I can actually perceive this problem. When I built my house, the lady at the post office said, "Well, what do you want your address to be?" She told me what the one on the right was, and what the one on the left was, and said, "Just pick something. Put it down." And I can see how consistency and some kind of a method would make sense to deal with some of these challenges. So, I like where you're going. Obviously, I think you define the problem well, and the type of outcome that we're looking for, and the type that is unacceptable. So it'll be interesting to see some of these processes be described and laid out in the future, and the solutions laid before us. So appreciate it, Devron. Thank you.
You brought to mind one thing that I'd like to add, Commissioner Gibson, before any other discussion, is we're not required by state code to give notice on these things, but we are... Not we. Hundred percent credit goes to my addressing manager. He contacts everybody that's potentially impacted by these changes. And it's not gonna be without pain. There are a lot of people that would rather pull their own teeth than change their address and have to contact the utility companies. And there's a lot involved that goes with that to changing their address. And we try our best to evaluate the situation, make sure there's no other alternative ways or things that we can do before we would take a step to actually make people have to change their addresses.
Go ahead, Commissioner Harvey.
Well, it wasn't as big a deal years ago when mapping and with the... We had the maps online. We did this with your department out at the fairgrounds, through all the interior roads, and named them, and gave them designators, and worked with your survey to find out exactly where they were, and found some inconsistencies, but also it helped along the way. And so, you know, while it's painful for some, and we only had a couple of, for instance, U.S.U. Parks and Rec and Animal Services, when there comes time for an emergency, it makes all the difference. So that's a... I think I applaud both of you for going through the hard part and getting this done. It's the right thing to do.
Really quickly, I guess I want to make sure that we make this as painful as possible.
Painful?
I'm just teasing. I would, I hope that we, as we go through this process, that we create a resource list for these folks, so they know who, as a gentle reminder, they would need to contact. And then if we could provide from our end, contact from the county perspective too, like our county assessor, Mr. Yuliberry, so he knows that there's a change in address, 911, there's a change in address. Any government entity that we have contact with, I think should be part of our process to help with that notification. So private individual, of course, banks, DMV, things like that, but other government entities that we deal with on a common occurrence, like the 911, which I think Commissioner Gibson talked about the importance. I think that we should create our own list of notifications to help offset some of that initial pain.
It's an excellent idea.
I appreciate it, because you texted me that specific question.
No, that's a really good idea. And we have identified a process, an internal process, where we actually will take this ordinance and record it, and it will get recorded, and through the recordation of that ordinance, we will get the notifications out to the people that need it, and it will be public record for anybody else that needs to see that has happened.
And just, why are we doing this as a county? Because Ogden Canyon is unincorporated. I learned that. I thought it was always... Didn't know it was unincorporated.
Yeah. They do receive some utilities from other entities, but they are an unincorporated...
The land is unincorporated.
Okay. Any further questions or discussion, Commissioners?
Ordinance 30?
I'm open for a motion on ordinance 30. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 30. I have a motion. I have a second. Any further discussion?
Commissioner Ebert? This is Cortland.
Cortland, how you doing, sir?
Good. Is this a first reading? I didn't see that on the agenda, but that's a question we have.
Good catch.
Typically, it's a first reading unless there's some kind of need to adopt it on the first...
My brains have told me it's a first reading, so I apologize about that.
So let's default to first reading, just in case. I don't think there's an exigent circumstance in here. I have a motion to adopt ordinance 30 as the first reading, and I have a second.
Second.
Are you okay with that friendly amendment? I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move to item number two, request for approval of a contract by and between Weber County and Lichia Geo Systems, Inc., for approval to host a BNSS GPS base station for the North American Smart Net Reference Network on our building, and provide the power of internet needed to run the base station. Devron, holy mackerel!
Sorry. I'll keep that a little more succinct next time. I apologize.
I can't say "addressing," okay? You're making me read that? Devron?
My... The survey office in the past has installed a GPS base station on our building here at the Weber Center. Let me back up a step. The difference between the GPS we use and the GPS on everybody's phones is we... Survey-grade GPS has a correction source. In the past, we had our own correction source base station up on the building. If you've ever entered the building through the back doors and walked across the top of the parking lot, you can see the pole attached to the back wall of the building with the GPS unit on top. Since, I don't know, in recent years, it's become more effective for surveyors to use a reference network, a network of GPS-based stations. And we've actually switched to this type of survey network as well, so we have no need for that base station on the building. However, I was approached by Peyton Hatchett, Kuker and Rankin, and he represents Laika in the state of Utah. They are trying to build a secondary reference network station here in Utah. And they have asked to have permission to use that base station, put their own equipment on it, but use it as part of their network, and they've offered us a license on their network, which will be a great advantage to us, because we'll be able to use two separate networks to confirm the work that we do. And it'll be a great advantage to the surveyors in general to have another network reference station that they can use in the state of Utah. And this will benefit surveyors in Weber County and in other counties. It really encompasses a whole network of base stations.
So what you're saying is, once again, Weber County and its employees are leading out, leading other counties with advancements?
Yeah. This is a good thing for surveying in general, not just for Weber County. So it's a benefit for everybody here.
Commissioner Gibson, do you have any questions? Are we working with Quinn Fowers through IT? And if we have, can you just touch base and make sure we're all...
Sure.
Working on the same page?
Yep. We've been in touch with property management, and we've been in touch with IT about this. We're... Really, we already have the base station there, and we already have the ability to use it. We just haven't. It's been dormant for a couple of years, but we're gonna bring it back active in a bigger, better way.
Awesome. Any further discussion? I'm open for a motion.
So moved.
Second. A motion on a contract by and between Weber County and the Lichia Geo Systems, Inc. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes. Thank you very much, Devron, for your work. Item number three, request for consideration of an interlocal agreement by and between Weber County and South Ogden City Community Development and Renewal Agency for the South Ogden Auto Mall Community Reinvestment Project. Mr. Douglas Larson.
Commissioners, good morning. Thank you so much for the opportunity. What a beautiful day. So you have in front of you an interlocal agreement, excuse me, between Weber County and the South Ogden Community Development and Renewal Agency that articulates the terms and conditions where we, as county and city government, can help facilitate private development for a project known as the South Ogden Auto Mall. Fundamentally, it's getting the Young Automotive Group, a landmark business in our community and our state, to develop the Mazda dealership here in Weber County in South Ogden City. Excuse my rusty voice. The project area is located at the southeast corner of 40th Street and Riverdale Road, and covers approximately four and a half acres. The total planned private investment exceeds $5 million in the project area, more than doubling the current assessed value of that four and a half acres. Our current property tax receipts that are generated, or have been generated in the past, from a roughly $3.5 million taxable value, are just about $10,000 as a taxing entity. Post-project, we anticipate those property tax receipts to exceed $25,000 annually, so more than doubling our revenue opportunity just from property tax. The project is anticipated to create 50 new jobs. And I would note, as we, you know, work in economic development, and we reach out to our business customers in the community, I had an interesting conversation from actually an executive at Young Automotive here within the last 90 days, and their efforts to reach and find qualified and certified auto mechanics. Depending on the level of certification for a lead auto mechanic, they can walk in the door with a $100,000 a year job. So not all 50 of these jobs will be lead auto mechanics, but a number of them will. And so, that's part of a main component that we look at with a project, is the number and type of jobs that a project intends to bring. So, just a side note. The project is requesting that we facilitate the development by providing 100% of the new property tax that's generated from the project area for 12 years, starting in 2018. As well, they're asking for what we're calling, in this interlocal agreement, a non-incremmental incentive that's calculated by 0.03% of the annual gross sales for the project. And they're asking for that revenue component for 12 years as well, again, starting in tax year 2018. We've put a benchmark in order for the project to receive the additional non-incremmental incentive, that the project gross taxable sales must meet a minimum of $20 million before that incentive or that component of revenue comes to the project. Candidly, we don't anticipate this project struggling to hit 20 million in annual sales. Specific to sales tax revenue for our entity, we're anticipating, based on their projections, of seeing a total sales tax revenue somewhere in the arena of $90,000 annually. So significant project, good jobs, a great company, generating good revenue, and a company that we are optimistic will be there for a long time. The property tax revenue, we have a cap on that in the interlocal agreement, that it shall not exceed $220,823. The non-incremmental incentive shall not exceed $105,029, for a total of $325,852 as a cap. Again, the terms are 12 years. I anticipate with their sales growth that they'll hit the $105,000 cap prior to the end of 12 years. Mayor Minster is here, as you know, and I would say Sean Wilkinson, but it's actually Matt Dixon.
I was gonna make the Sean Wilkinson joke.
I appreciate the latitude. If you have any specific questions to the project and the use of the funds, or any questions for me, I'm happy to answer.
I'd like to invite the mayor and Mr. Dixon up. If there's anything that you want to add to the project or to the value to your community, we'd love to hear from you.
And Matt, just so you know where you're coming up, come on up. While you're coming up, the joke to that was that a couple of weeks ago, Sean was sitting on the back row during public comment. He was about the only person in the room, and Commissioner Ebert was convinced it was you here to make a public comment, called him Matt Dixon.
Prior to my new spectacles, which is one of the reasons I got new spectacles. Sean was slightly offended.
I'd be happy to be mistaken of Sean any day.
Mayor Minster?
Well, first of all, this is a treat, to be able to come before the commission. As you all are aware of our circumstances in South Ogden, we're just out of room to grow. And this is going to be just a great, great project for our city. We've worked with Young Group before and right now, and they're a great asset to the city. And so, we're gonna ask you to please go ahead and go positive on this new business. It's gonna be nice. And we won't be seeing beds anymore, mattresses.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Dixon?
Yeah, thank you. We appreciate our partnership with the county. And to Commissioner Harvey's point, this is a win for Weber County. The other options were outside of Weber County. And so, we're grateful for the county, as well as the school district's participation in this project. For the public's benefit, you know, these... You may ask, why does it make any sense to contribute public tax dollars towards incentivizing private development? If you look at the cost to a project like this, to redevelop, to acquire and assemble parcels of ground, to demo all the buildings that exist, that's the reason the state code allows us to utilize what's called tax increment financing tools, which essentially levels the playing field, so that communities like ours... which essentially levels the playing field so that communities like ours that are built out can really compete at the same level as a community that may have already raw ground, ready for development. Uh, we can utilize the, the public dollars to, to level the playing field, so to speak, and I'll tell you, your staff has done a great job. Appreciate working with, uh, with Doug and Sean and, uh, also conversations we've, we've had with you as commissioners. Um, and I will say, for the public's benefit, that, that these, these contributions from the county, from the city, from the school district, uh, have been scrutinized heavily by all entities to ensure that these public dollars are only going to costs that really are meant to level the playing field, to not enrich, uh, the developer beyond, uh, the demolition and the site prep and the UTEs and those kinds of things that make sense. So, um, I appreciate the, the partnership and working with the county and applaud your great, uh, your great staff. They've, it's been great to work with, so, thank you.
Let me just mention one thing along with that and make sure I'm clear as well, and I think, I heard, I understand it proper, appropriately, but this doesn't, this wouldn't include any current tax revenue. This is new growth. So that's one thing that I think helps people to get their arms around this process, is that this is, this is incentive, but it's, it's money that wouldn't be there if not, if not for this project. So this is a certain percentage of the new growth that is generated from the project that would, that, that, that wouldn't be generated if it wasn't for this particular project. So that, that helps me to feel better about the whole process.
That's correct. Commissioner Harvey.
Uh, one thing I will say, well, two things I'm gonna say really quickly, is when I've worked in this tri-county area right here for a lot of years, where South Ogden, Riverdale, and Ogden kind of meet, and that corner, for 20-plus years, has needed this type of reinvestment in it. Uh, multiple businesses have come and gone. Um, those type of businesses probably weren't creator, job creators, and this concept of infill and the difficulty in, in overcoming that gap on infill is an issue that all of our urban core, uh, communities will continue to have, and this is a tremendous tool. We can help revitalize our communities, and so we're, we're appreciative to the Young Group, willing to invest, because these are investments in our community, especially these large car, new car dealerships, and are appreciative of our municipal partners who have been working diligently to, to make these improvements. So thank you very much. Douglas, do you have anything else to add?
I don't, unless you have more questions.
Commissioners, I'll make a motion that we approve the interlocal agreement.
I will second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, it passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving to item number four, request for approval of a contract by and between Weber County and Sports Sites, Inc., to use Sports Site software to manage sport registrations and park reservations for the Culture, Parks, and Recreation Department. Mr. Todd Ferrario, or as I call him, Big Blue.
Wow. Thank you, gentlemen. Um, pretty straightforward agreement. Um, we'd like to state, this is about three months in process, there was some liability issues because of the personal information that went back and forth, so I want to thank Chris Crockett, the attorney's office, that got this hammered out. Um, this company, the reason it was chosen is it can not only do our camp sites, our group sites, but it will also handle all of recreation. So instead of people sleeping overnight in front of our offices to try to get a group site for summertime, we will migrate all group sites online, and about 25% of our camp sites online this year. All the recreation with team building registration will be online. We will be integrating Fortes, so the online will be handled through the county's Forte system. Um, we still will have the ability to do it in-office, too, um, but this is kind of moving us forward, making us a little more agile and, and hopefully, uh, giving people the chance to reserve and not drive up to Weber Memorial or North Fork and realize it's full, um, the weekend they would like to camp, so.
Thank you, Todd. Any questions for, uh, Mr. Ferrario?
Another, another example of us having a problem being too busy, too overbooked. So we're doing a lot of things right.
And using old technology and old process. So thank you very much, Todd. Uh, Commissioner Gibson, anything?
Nothing.
Okay, I'm open for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the contract.
Second, I have a motion and a second, should we approve the contract between Weber County and, and Sports Site, Inc. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, it passes. Thank you very much, Todd.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Have a nice day. Item number five, request for approval of a contract by and between Weber County and Astro to utilize the Astro software application on a trial basis for no cost. Mr. John Yuliberi, our county assessor.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to come before you today. So what we're requesting approval for is a nondisclosure agreement between Astro and Weber County. What Astro is, is a searchable database that has, uh, sale and lease information for commercial and industrial properties. Uh, this is really important for us as the assessor's office, because there's a real paucity of data, of this type of data out there, uh, and the more data and the more accurate data that we can get, the better our assessments will be. So Astro's providing, uh, Weber County a free trial of their service, and if we're satisfied with this free trial, then we have the possibility of entering into a contract with them at a later date. So I'd be happy to field any questions that you may have.
Commissioners, any questions specific to Astro software applications or anything else you have for Mr. John Yuliberi today?
I, I don't. I, I like the fact that, uh, he's trying new things and trying to, uh, work to be more efficient, and I appreciate that. That's what this shows me.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Wonderful. Seeing no further discussion, uh, we're open for a, a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve this contract with Weber County and Astro.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, it passes. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item number six, a request for approval of a contact by and between Weber County and Salzburger Echo, Inc., to provide entertainment to the 2018 Hoff.
I was just gonna compliment her for sticking around the whole time. Now I don't want to.
I know, there's two. There was a couple others, too.
Carrie Montgomery.
So this is the last and final contract for entertainment for the 2018 Hoff German Festus is with Salzburger Echo. Uh, the contract is for $2,400. We will also provide hotel rooms and two airfare tickets for band members. Uh, the committee is super excited to have these guys back. They are actually bringing the Alp horns, so that's why we wanted these guys back for twelve.
Alp horns, that's awesome. You don't get Alp horns everywhere.
No.
Anywhere. Any questions for, uh, Carrie Montgomery, specific to the contract?
This is a big part of the celebration, and I look forward to it every year. I'm excited for them to come back, so I'll make a motion that we approve the contract.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Do you know the members that would be flying in? Do you know their names by any chance?
Not yet. Tony has not given me their agendas yet. There is one, I believe his name is Mark.
Yeah.
Mark is coming from Minnesota.
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 Target.
Yes.
Yeah.
The other one I am not sure of. As soon as I find it, I'll let you know.
I was just curious. It's great. They're good. You know, you, for those of us who have distinguished tapes or distinguished taste in Alp horn music.
Alp horn. Wow. Yeah, I'm not touching that. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing no further discussion on the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, it passes. Thank you very much, Carrie.
Thank you.
Item number seven, request for approval of a change order number nine on the 3500 West contract by and between Weber County and Stake or Parson to add the 1400 South Storm Drain Extension. Mr. Jared Anderson.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
You know, we have all this exciting stuff. Good morning. Awesome presentation and a boring change order. The one thing I can say with this project that's been exciting is that we have not gone over the original contract amount. There's been a lot of change orders that have gone up and down, and we're trying to save in any corners that we can, and this, we're, we're finalizing this project, so this was one area that as we were doing a final review on everything, as we were doing a walkthrough in the project, we noticed that this area, right, and right next to the road, and quite a good steep drop-off, and we said, well, we better get a box in here with a little outlet that'll help hold that road up. So this is what that change order is for. I don't know if we'll see any more on this project. We're getting close to wrapping it up, and it's been, uh, that's the exciting thing I can say about this project, so. Any questions?
Completion date estimate?
Um, month from now, approximately.
Okay, great. Should have the project wrapped up by the end of the year, for sure, huh?
The whole project? Yep.
All those families coming in for Thanksgiving, they'll enjoy that new road. It'll just be so nice.
That's right.
Uh, it seems to me the amount of the change order and the purpose of the change order are in line and make a tremendous amount of sense. The, any type of damage that could be caused, because we didn't put the box in, could be a fairly large bill, so I think it makes sense, and I appreciate that you applied some engineering prowess to this. So thank you very much. Do we have any further discussion? If not, I'm open for a motion on the change order number nine.
I'll move that we, uh, approve the change order number nine for 3500 West contract between Weber County and Stake or Parson.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, it passes. Thank you, Jared, very much.
Thank you.
We'll move to num, uh, number eight, which is our last, um, item, actual item, is a request for approval of a resolution of the county commissioners of Weber County to initiate the annexation of unincorporated areas of Weber County into the Ogden Valley Service Area. Our presenter is Commissioner Gibson.
So I was contacted, um, by Mr. Steve Waldrop, who, uh, you can always see him coming. Um, he is, uh, he has been working with a group of people, um, to bring some changes to the Ogden Valley Parks Districts, and, uh, he asked me to, uh, present this, uh, for our agenda today, and, and he's the one that's, that's, uh, led this effort, so I'm gonna turn the time over to him to explain what they're trying to do with this resolution. So Steve?
Steve, would you state your full name and your address for FOT?
Yes. Steve Waldrop, uh, 1911 North 5700 East Eden, Utah. You don't have a middle name? You really want my full name? Andrew Stephen Waldrop.
And you realize that your address is the, the model of one of the most popular guns in the world, a 1911. Maybe you have not, Rick.
1911 Colt?
Sure. Anyway, I apologize, we digress, but you are the last.
That's a mental floss right there. Um, thank you for your time today, and thank you all for, uh, helping us with this project. The genesis of this, uh, began several years ago, um, when, uh, I was actually on the Eden Park Board and realized that we had two park districts in the valley that were, uh, joining, and parks that were approximately three miles apart, um, that operated independently of one another. And then on further investigation, we discovered that, uh, the, uh, method of funding those parks was very different, that in the Eden Park District, it was a $20 flat fee per home constructed, um, that needed to be manually entered on the tax rolls, and in the Liberty Park District, it was a, uh, mill levy on the property tax. And then, uh, we also discovered that there was, uh, a large chunk of the valley, approximately 43% of the value of property in the valley that paid nothing to support the parks. Uh, as we looked at it even more closely, the same house in Ogden Valley, uh, would have had four different results, depending on where it was located. In the Liberty Park District, a $400,000 home would have paid between $32 and $35 a year for park support. The same house in the Eden Park District would pay 20. The same house in East Huntsville would pay zero, and the same house in Huntsville Town would pay $118. So there was a great disparity in the support of the parks and an incredible, uh, confluence of use. I mean, no one ever says, well, I can't go to Huntsville Park, I don't live in Huntsville. Um, or I can't go to Liberty Park, because that's those Liberty Dirty Dogs over there, and I won't use their park. Um, those days are long gone up there. So we convened, uh, we started with the park boards and asked them if they would, um, be, uh, open to the possibility of joining forces, and they were, um, park boards wanted some answers to questions, and as we worked through the process, um, the park boards came on, on, uh, and, and supported it. Uh, we convened a, a pretty diverse group of, of interested individuals, um, from all the different areas of the valley, from East Huntsville all the way up to North Fork and up in Liberty, um, and everything in between, to, um, and we called ourselves the, the FOPS, the Friends of the Park. Um, and, uh, so, uh, we raised money, we bought, uh, two acres, or, well, 2.4 acres on the corner of Liberty Park that has now, uh, been undergoing improvement. It looks fantastic. It's gonna be added to the park. Um, we've got another four acres that'll be added before the end of the year to Liberty Park, um, from a donation of an interested individual. Um, and, uh, and then this is the, kind of the third leg of that, is to combine and expand the park districts. So what has happened to this point is that the, uh, Eden and Liberty Parks, uh, have joined forces. Um, that plat is currently at the, uh, Lieutenant Governor's Office for final certification. Um, so the boundary adjustment will be complete, and Eden and Liberty Parks will be joined under the name Ogden Valley Parks Service Area, so it'll be the Ogden Valley Parks. This resolution, um, would initiate a procedure to annex the balance of the valley into the, uh, Ogden Valley Parks District. The impact of that for a, um, and we'll call it an average home, uh, would be for a $400,000 primary home, um, in, anywhere in Ogden Valley, uh, would be a $30.60, um, tax. The approach we've taken is kind of, you know, parks are like apple pie and bunnies and grandma, you know? Everyone loves parks. Um, and as we've gone through this process, we've had, at the last two Fourth of Julys, we've had booths in all of the different parks to take public comment. We've held, I wanna say probably 10 public meetings, um, where the general public has been invited to comment, um, and, uh, participate in the process. We've opened up the, the FOP. Anybody can come, these aren't closed meetings by any stretch, um, and, uh, and we've tried to engage everybody we can in the discussion. Um, to date, we've had one individual, um, that has expressed significant opposition in, in all of that time. Other people that have had questions, um, we've been able to resolve those concerns, and, and it's equitable. And I think that's the, the bottom line, is this is an approach for, uh, equity throughout, uh, Ogden Valley for the use of, of common assets. Um, one other significant thing that is, uh, has happened, and I saw that, uh, Mayor Truitt emailed, uh, or texted, I think, uh, Commissioners this morning, is that Huntsville Town has passed a resolution to join the park district as well. Um, and this will do two things. One, it will, uh, create a single park district throughout the entire valley, including Huntsville Town, um, and it will tremendously reduce the burden on Huntsville Town. I mean, it's, it's really eye-opening to note that they are paying a, an incredibly disproportionate share for Huntsville Park, where it is used extensively by everybody in the valley and by people that come up from outside of the valley. Um, the other thing that this will do is give us one body. When an event comes into town, they can coordinate with all the parks at, at one time, um, which has been an issue in the past, where, you know, people are saying, well, I talked to Eden Park and Liberty Park said this, and, and these guys wanna charge us this, and these guys don't wanna charge us this, and, and it's been a real issue. Um, and we've had some events that have kind of trashed one park, and then, uh, been kicked out in that park and come to the other parks without the other parks knowing that they trashed the first park, and, and then they trashed two parks, um, before anybody knows about it. So this will solve some of those issues. So the, um, the resolution is asking the commission to begin the annexation procedure, and that is the extent of the commission's, uh, obligation in this. It is simply a request to the park boards to, um, to initiate this procedure, or the park board to initiate this procedure. Following this resolution, uh, the park board will need to have a public hearing, um, and we will have, uh, in addition to the formal public hearing, we'll have a couple other informational meetings where we will, um, you know, try and take concerned, uh, any concerns, any comments, um, uh, from any of the, the affected citizens, and, uh, and then a notice will mail out to each property owner, so everybody will be notified of the public hearing. Following that public hearing, there's a 30-day, uh, window for people to file their, uh, opposition to the, to the, um, to the annexation. So i- it's not, uh, this is not the commission doing something, uh, on the commission's initiative, this is a, um, a process that we started up in the valley. Um, I've somehow become the, the draft horse, uh, pulling, pulling, uh, the sled full of people that are telling me where to go, um, and, uh, and so that's my, my role here today. And so, that's my role here today is to submit this to the commission. Let me just read for the commission's benefit and for the benefit of the record. We've gone around to all of the larger stakeholders that we could think of, and I'm sure we've missed somebody, but we've tried really hard to hit everyone. I've got to find this page here. There it is. And this has been endorsed in writing by the following individuals. Liberty Park Board and Committee Chairs, Ross and Julie Mertlik, Mike and Julie Rhodes, Mike and Charmaine Croft, Kevin and Vicky Phipps, Brian and Tessa Bailey, Roger and Karen Bailey, Brett and Corey Hansen, Chris and Lindsay Allen, Brett and Jenny Harup, Lain and Joanne Christensen, Clifford and Renee Holmes, Dale Larson. The Eden Park Board, Nicholas Froer, Nedra Peterson, Lance Quinn, Brent Christensen, Maureen Peterson. The Huntsville Town Council, Jim Truitt, Doug Allen, Mike Ingstrom, Bill Wangsgard, Bill White. And then the Friends of the Park, Stephen, Jenny Waldrop, Kimball Wheatley, Dave and Sharon Holmstrom, Laurent and Christine Jufray, Gail Allstrom, Dennis Shaw, Greg and Lynn Graves, Gary and Jan Fulmer, Janet Muir, Gage and Gloria Froer, Bob and Jody Smith. And then also significantly, it's been endorsed with a letter signed by each of the following: Nordic Valley Resort, Snow Basin Ski Resort, Summit Powder Mountain, and Wolf Creek Resort by their respective organizations. So, again, this has been a very lengthy process, a very involved process. We've tried to involve as many people as possible. We've posted articles in the Valley News. I mean, we've done everything we can to get the word out, and given the low hurdle of the tax increase, we just feel like this is the right next step to take.
Wonderful. It sounds like it's been well-vetted. It sounds like it's a positive step in addressing some of the bifurcated services we have in the Upper Valley. And I think the commission, from the perspective I've heard, as it's been kind of bandied about from different community members, it's positive. So, I think we're good to move forward on it. Commissioners, any other thoughts before we move forward?
Well, go ahead, and I'll. I appreciate that it's been two July Fours plus all the other outreach. You know, I appreciate the local, all the local work that's been done and getting, this is a huge, a huge thing that you're doing or have done. I appreciate, there's a lot of time and energy and effort and consternation and communication that's gone on with this. I love the idea that it's consistent and that it provides protection to the people up there, especially with regards to user groups. And having worked with, in production of groups and meetings and events for nearly a quarter of a century, this is a good thing. It will have a negative impact on some, but when you consider the other side of the coin, it reduces the liability. It's well done, Steve, and I commend you and all those in the group that have worked so hard to get this done. And so, that would be my comment.
Thank you.
Just to add, you know, when Steve approached me about this first, over two years ago, I'm guessing, I think it was clear at that time to him, because he laid out a very, a very clear argument as to what the problem was. It was clear that there needed to be something done, but it was this, man, there's all these entities, and some people aren't in, and some people are in one of these other two. Weber County had the, has a piece of property that was donated by Snow Basin as part of their development that doesn't fit into anything that we do that was intended for a park, and it needs somewhere to be, and it needed to fit within some kind of a structure. And so, you would think that all this would make sense, and it did, but that doesn't minimize the challenge that it was to put it all together. And so, Steve, I think you have done a tremendous job of not only creating a vision, but articulating that to so many people in the community to where you have such strong buy-in. And I'll be honest, frankly, I don't remember very many instances where someone can take on a project of this scale and scope and receive the kind of buy-in and community acceptance that I think this project has received. Even the ones that are going to end up paying a little bit more understand why they're paying a little bit more and are generally comfortable with it. And so, I just think it's a tremendous step forward for the community in the way that we all think about how we work together to accomplish goals instead of kind of segregate into our corners and wait for the bell to ring so we can come out and start decking each other. I think it's just, it's made a tremendous impact, I think, in the community in the way they think. And so, it's my hope as we go forward, Commissioners, that the county will be supportive in any way that they can, including being willing to consider donating that parcel that is in county ownership to a newly created district so that they can manage it appropriately in a way that we probably couldn't and just be supportive in a lot of different ways. But that's certainly one of the most positive ones. So, Steve, I want to tell you thanks for your effort on this. Having watched a similar effort on the West Side, I think it's, it's one of those things that's fraught sometimes with challenges, and you've done a tremendous job of making this work, and hopefully others can learn. It's not just parks that need to figure out how to work together. Let me just leave it at that. It's, there's a lot of, and I'm not, that'll probably set off Commissioner Harvey, but there are.
We're not setting him off because we need to move along.
There are more, there are more issues out there.
Yeah. So, I'll make a motion then that we initiate annexation of the unincorporated.
Has a resolution been prepared or just?
So, that's the question. On the reason. Have we had a chance to create the resolution?
Yes, we have the resolution.
I believe so. I was told that there is one. Yes.
We'll approve the resolution initiating the annexation of the unincorporated areas in Weber County into the Ogden Valley Service Area. This would be a first reading then, wouldn't it?
Not for a resolution.
It's 43.
43. We have a motion to approve Resolution 43 of the Weber County Commissioners starting the process to initiate annexation for unincorporated areas of Weber County into the Ogden Valley Service District. Do I have a second to that motion? Second. I have a second to the motion. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none.
Commissioner Gibson?
Aye.
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
And Chair Ebert?
Aye. Thank you very much. And again, would you just pass along to all of those that have put a tremendous amount of work, our appreciation for their time, effort, and energy that they have expensed? I know that this has been going on for several years. Mr. John Bond has talked to me about it for two years straight, so I know he's done a tremendous amount of heavy lifting and has been pointing the spear from the county's perspective into providing resources or assistance, so. And then the rest of the team, for sure.
I was going to say that, if you guys have a chance to thank John and Roger Brunker, don't thank him, but.
We'll thank Roger, but we're not going to thank John.
Roger and John and Leann and Deveron, and we've had just tremendous support from staff.
He's been involved as well.
Yeah, Courtland and just up and down, we've been very, very helped by your staff and are really grateful for all that support because there's a lot to this that seems simple, but not much is easy.
We'll reconfirm what Commissioner Gibson was touching on, is the county is vested in this and will be a good partner in this for sure. So, let us know what we can continue to do. Thank you very much. Now, it's time to set aside for public comment.
I actually have one thing, Commissioners. I'd like to put it this time.
Please go take the microphone down there.
I thought you were in a hurry. And I'll do it. I am. As you, Commissioners, only in passing have we had this conversation, but as Commissioner, Chair Ebert, as you talked about our role and responsibility, as Commissioners, we are in the, we have an obligation to lead. This crowd today represents a perfect environment for me to bring this up. And it's been my observation in more than the last year, maybe 15 months, that there's been some talk. And in a future commission meeting, I would like to have some dialogue regarding the effective form of government or to put forth a study, whether we remain as a three-member commission, whether we go to an expanded commission, or whether that even includes a mayor or a council with an appointed executive type of commission. Our role as Commissioners, our role is to create a study group. It's important to me that we are fiduciarily responsible with taxpayer funds, and I would like to do this with the minimal amount of funds necessary so that it appears at the right time and on the right election cycle so that we minimize the cost of this, so that we can maximize our effectiveness as both executive and legislative body. So, a study would include the most cost-effective time to do this so that it's a management decision, and that as leaders of this county, we need to manage well. And so, those are my comments today. I just, I didn't speak with either one of you individually or collectively because I just wanted, if you had some raw comment that was available now, but those are my thoughts pertaining to this and would welcome any more, but I would love to be, if I could, at least have the opportunity of speaking about it more formally as an item on the commission agenda moving forward at some future time.
Not an issue. We're welcome to put, you are welcome to put that on the agenda to move that dialogue forward. I think, again, one of the first things that I did when I came into office is start the process of creating transparency, and we want to be completely transparent in all of our decision-making, but also when we look at how our government's being ran and make sure we're running it in the most efficient, cost-effective, and decision-making, forward-thinking way we can. So, good thoughts, and we'll definitely revisit. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I'm open for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.